Please stand for the pledge.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, public for what it stands.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to have a moment of silence this evening for Corey Bisnet, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. We have one presentation this evening, the student survey results from the Superintendent Student Advisory Council. We always look forward to this, so I welcome you guys up to hear these results.
Good evening. My name is Giorgio Rowda. I'm an upcoming junior and I am the co-president of the SSAC along with my friend DJ. I would like to thank you all for welcoming us this evening as this group has truly put in a lot of time and effort in their presentations. Who we are. The Superintendent Student Advisory Council is a select group of students, grades five through 12, who act as young leaders and work cooperatively as a council to represent their peers in the administrative level. Our cabinet puts our fellow students' concerns at the top of our priority list. We collect feedback from the student population through our suggestion boxes and through our annual student survey, and then work collaboratively to discuss these issues with the superintendent of schools and resolve them. Doing so has made this group truly phenomenal in their efforts, and it makes me proud to watch them learn, grow, get out of their comfort zones, and make new friends. As our slogan so clearly states, "We may be few, but we represent you", it is no doubt that being a student representative in a district as big as ours takes a great deal of responsibility. And it makes me very happy to see these students here tonight, waiting to present to you all with courage and enthusiasm. Please give them all a round of applause.
Alright, so our survey, we broke them up into a few different categories. So we have climate, academics, communications, safety, homework, engagement, responsiveness, quality, and satisfaction. Some of these questions were added and modified based on the 2018 results to line up with Vision 2020. This year, we had 4,074 district-wide participants.
This category is climate. Question number four, "I feel welcome at my school." It is undeniably important that an educational setting can be a place where all students, regardless of their race, gender, height, weight, religion, or personal beliefs, can feel comfortable. Feeling welcome in the classroom is the first step in guiding our students to be both academically successful and socially competent. It is pleasing to see that over four-fifths of our students, district-wide, feel welcome at their school. However, nearly 30% of students at the high school do not feel welcome. It is important that we ask ourselves which parts of the school day are vital in allowing students to express themselves sincerely, and which parts of the day enable them to indulge in their own unique interests with peers who share the same hobbies.
Good evening, my name is Bray Nesposito and I'm going to 7th grade at Gillette Road Middle School. Thank you for letting us be here tonight. I'm here to present questions five and seven of the 2019 district-wide student survey. I'm going to start with question five, "I feel respected by faculty." District-wide, 21% of students disagree with this statement, which is an alright number, but that also means just about 2 out of 10 people don't feel respected by the teaching staff, which is bad, but it can get worse. The high school has a 33% disagreement with the student body feeling that they are not being respected by faculty. That is 1 out of 3 people in the high school out of the 1,217 people who participated in the survey at CNSI. Compare that to the 10% who disagreed at Gillette Road Middle and this might create a trend that you could see in later questions. The trend is that the higher grade you go, the more students disagree with more positive things. The next question I want to go over is question seven, "I feel connected to my school." Throughout the district, 35% of the students disagreed with this, which is concerning. Over 1 out of 3 people in the district say they are not connected to their school. These statistics were better last year, which when it was a 34% disagreement. If it continues to get worse, there will be less people in clubs, groups, school events, and sports. We can still advertise those things on morning announcements, flyers, and on the PA. We can try, but we can't change the students to make them participate in these things. Overall, the results of both questions were slightly concerning, but we can always work on improving this. We have to remember that our job is to hear the students' voices and to do our best to do the right thing. Thank you and good night.
Number 12, "I believe that the staff and students in my school create an overall positive community." Through clubs and activities, being a part of a team or ensemble, and by the way we treat others, both students and teachers should strive to establish and maintain a positive community. At CNS, the Positivity Project has done an exceptional job in hosting activities that include all students in the school, ultimately tightening the bonds between students and their peers. A recent study conducted at Stanford University involving middle school students discovered that students who have positive attitudes excel in their math classes, concluding that positivity can actually enhance one's cognitive abilities. Teachers and students should try their best to eliminate frustration and depression among students, regardless of how difficult the balance between academics, extracurriculars, and maintaining social consciousness may be.
Good evening, my name is Megan Johnston and I will be a sophomore at CNS's upcoming school year. I will be presenting question number 29, "I feel comfortable expressing my interest and opinions at school." As you can see, 31% of the district disagrees with this statement. This means that almost 1/3 of the student body does not feel comfortable expressing themselves at their school. When taking a closer look at individual schools, we realized that there was a notable decrease of agreement between the middle schools and the high school. At Gillette Road Middle School, 77% of the school agreed, whereas at the high school, only 60% of the students agreed. It's a given that as students get older, they can become more judgmental of their peers, but I believe that we can make our schools a more positive environment for students to feel comfortable expressing themselves.
Good evening, my name is DJ Vilnav and I'm going to be the next co-president of Superintendent Student Advisory Council. I'm going to be a junior this year. The questions that I'm presenting are questions 16 and 17. Both of these questions deal with our areas of technology. Question 16 states, "Technology is easily available in my school." We see that almost 90% of students agree that technology is easily available at the schools, which is great. We see that the work of the district to increase technology throughout our schools has paid off. We should keep increasing technology in schools as a way for students to further their education. Question 17 states, "Technology enhances my learning." We see that at both the high school and Gillette Road Middle School, 85% of students agree with this statement. This shows that at all levels, that we are integrating technology into our classrooms to create a successful learning environment. Both of these questions give us great feedback and show that the work of the district to increase our technology and use it in the classroom should continue. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joy Kowala and I am doing statement number 30. This statement says, "When I don't understand the material being taught, my teacher is always willing to help." The amount of students who agreed with this statement this year is 83%. Last year, 82% of students agreed. This shows that students overall agree that teachers are approachable. This statement shows an area in our district where we excel.
Hi, my name is Riley Kowala. I'm a junior at CNS and I am vice president of the SSAC. I have question number nine, which states, "I feel comfortable asking school administration for help." When I originally looked at the data, only 15% of students disagreed or strongly disagreed with this statement. I originally thought that that was a pretty good number, but when taking a closer look, we realized that over 1,500 students skipped this question, and on average, about 100 students skipped other questions, district-wide. I decided to take a closer look at how many kids skipped these questions for other schools. At CNS, 600 skipped this question and on average, there was about 11 skips per question. For the junior high, there was 511 skips, and on average, there was about 20 for other questions. For Gillette, there was 117 skips, and then the average was 20 skips. Lastly, Roxboro had 165 skips with an average of 10 skips per question. My first thought for this was that the question might be in an inconvenient location or located at the bottom of the page where it could be easily missed. But when looking back at the survey, it was in an obvious place and students intentionally skipped it. This leads me to believe that students may not know what the word "administration" means or who "administration" includes. It is a goal for next year to say who is included in "administration." Students may also feel more comfortable asking teachers for help rather than "administration", because students usually build closer relationships with their teachers. Whatever the case is, having this many students skip this question is an alarm. Students need to feel comfortable asking school administration for help. We need to bridge the gap between students and administration. This could include administration getting to know students on a more personal level. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Hannah Boyle and I'm going to be a freshman at the junior high. I have question number 10, which reads, "I believe that school administration works their best to address issues students may have." According to this year's survey results, 36% of students disagree with this statement, district-wide. The largest percentile is coming from the CNS high school and the junior high school. At about half of students who disagree, we feel this negatively impacts students. This might be addressed by administration making students more aware of the reasonings behind decisions. Most students just want to feel acknowledged in the decision-making process. I also have question 14, which reads, "My teachers teach information to me in a way I can clearly understand." I have learned, all students learn in different ways, and it's important that teachers take the time necessary to cater to the learning needs of all students. The results of this year's survey have shown that teachers are doing just that. The data corresponding with this question says that 80% of students, district-wide, agreed that teachers teach information to them in a way they can clearly understand, showing that teachers are rising to the challenge and ensuring students are comprehending the information they need to succeed in school. It is key that advances in this area continue in order to enhance the learning experience of all students, district-wide.
Hi, my name is Haley White. I am a recent graduate of CNS and I will be doing question number 21, "I feel safe in my school." So if we scroll through Facebook and we switch on the news, we obviously are seeing the recent events that are happening in our communities, and I think that this is, if not, one of the most important question that is on this survey, and that's why I want to take a little bit more time on this question. A lot of people ask me why I returned to this council even after I recently graduated, and I'm starting to pack up for college. It is topics like these I am extremely passionate about that make me want to share my experiences. The reason this council exists is for staff members, parents, the community, and of course, the Board of Education to get another perspective on what the inside of our district looks like, and I want to share just that. My junior year of high school was one year I will never forget, not because of the workload, college stuff, and all the normal stressful things that happen during your junior year. On February 14, 2018, learning of the tragic events that happened at the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School changed CNS. The hallways during passing were completely silent. Staff members were at every corner of our school. If a chair dropped on the floor above us and made a really loud noise, our classrooms would go into a panic. I wore a Fitbit every single day to school and my heart rate was normally at 84 beats per minute. During the months of February to June, during the school hours, it never dropped below 125. Sitting in lunch, my friends and I discussed the quickest escape route if anything were to happen every single day. According to our student survey, in 2018, overall, 1/3 of the student population disagreed with the statement, "I feel safe in school." I bring all of this up so we can truly recognize the progress we've made over this past year. In our 2019 survey, 5% more of students feel safe in school. We appreciate the effort that has gone into our schools, such as training for faculty, more vigorous checks at the front desks, and seminars being held for students. But recent events outside these doors show us that we cannot get comfortable. There is always better technology, better strategy, and better measures we can take to ensure the safety of every single student who walks in the front doors. We appreciate everything that has been done so far, but there is no such thing as too safe. Thank you for taking the time to listen to my experiences, and I hope you really take my words to heart, and please recognize the significant impact your words can have as these kids' futures. Thank you.
My name is Allison Navara. I'm in 7th grade at Roxboro Road Middle School. The question I'm reading about is, "I know exactly what to do and how to behave in an emergency situation." This past year, in 2019, only 9% of students disagreed with this question. In the year before, 2018, 15% of students disagreed with the question. From the year 2018 to 2019, the percentage went up 5% of students had agreed with this statement. This shows the efforts the district is implementing is working.
Hello, my name is Olivia and I'm going to be a junior in this upcoming year. The question 27, "I feel comfortable raising my hand in class to ask a question." 72% agreed and about 28% disagreed, which means there's over 1,000 kids who do not feel comfortable in their own classrooms. Over a four-year period, there is a close to no improvement, and although the results are not strongly unfavorable, they could be improved through smaller class sizes, which would lead to better teacher-to-student relationships and make it easier to have a more open environment, which is needed to make students feel more comfortable. Increasing size engagement by taking advantage of asking questions, giving shorter lectures, and getting a bigger variety of learning strategies could help students feel more comfortable and confident with not only contributing to class discussions, but also getting along with their peers. With stronger relationships with the classroom comes with a better learning experience. Question 31 is, "I feel comfortable approaching my teachers when I need help." About 79% agreed and 21% disagreed, which is almost 1,000 people who disagree. For the 28% of students from the previous question that do not feel comfortable raising their hand, the alternative would to be ask their teachers after school. When students are struggling, they should ask their available sources for help, but only 21% of students are not at ease doing so. Improving the relationships with teachers to students would directly improve the results of the survey and lead to more prosperous educational systems.
Hi, my name is Emily Bradley and I am the secretary for SSAC. I'm presenting question number 34, which reads, "I like the after-school activities offered at my school." District-wide, 26% of students disagree or strongly disagree with this statement. As students get older, the number of students that do not like their after-school activities increases. If we increase the variety of after-school activities offered, more students will find something that they enjoy. And if more students like the after-school activities and belong to a club, they will feel more connected to their school.
Hi, I'm Cassidy and I'm going into 9th grade at the junior high. I'm reading off question 36. Overall, I am satisfied with my school experience. 26% disagreed at the high school and 12% disagreed at Gillette Road Middle School. I believe we can work on the cleanliness of the high school. In Gillette, the bathrooms were very clean. If something was ever broken, it would be fixed very quick. The bathrooms were almost always running properly. Where at the high schools, the bathrooms are unacceptable. Some girls have told me that there were stall doors broken the whole year that never got fixed. And apparently, one door literally came off and no one could use that stall anymore. This was quite surprising. We can do better. Why should the students have to wait to go to the lab to not even have a stall to use? I strongly believe we need to work on the sanitariness in the high school. Things should be cleaner and fixed quicker. Thank you for listening.
Thank you guys all so much for welcoming us this evening and for listening. We really do appreciate it each and every year. But before we conclude, are there any questions for us?
So different schools, we've actually been kind of going back and forth with this, the best way to do it for each school. So I know for, in the high school, every single student is required to take a physical education class. It's kind of hard because some people take English, some people don't, so we thought that would be the best way. We brought out all the Chromebooks and one week we dedicated just to taking their survey. I'm pretty sure in the middle schools, every single English class took it. I think in the junior high, it was the same for English classes. Over the years, we have seen more participation. It's still not exactly where we need it to be, but I think we're still trying to find ways to get more involvement with that.
I just want to say, as a former elementary teacher, don't be disheartened about at the high school. Doesn't matter what question is brought up as you go on. And if you did a survey, it'd be interesting if you did a survey, 3rd and 4th graders, it would be the highest. And that's what happens at school, as you go through the levels of school. Just doesn't seem like the students feel more the ownership that you do in elementary. So don't be disheartened about anything. And you have some really good ideas that I heard from men that I'm sure Mr. Bowles, the superintendent, and his cabinet and others will... Thank you so much, appreciate it.
I just wanted to say, great job and wow, thanks for coming out. This is your summer break and look at how many people came and participated in this presentation. I appreciate it. I think your questions were great and, you know, typically, people look at, you know, the glass half-empty, the glass half-full, and you pointed out where we were doing well in things, but you also addressed areas of improvement and you had suggestions of how to improve that area, which I love that. And I appreciate also Haley White coming back and participating in this presentation as well. And I heard every word you said about the safety of our students and every kid should feel safe when they're in school. There's no...
They are truly amazing. The questions and the analysis of the questions and they bantered back and forth as to the whys and I was very impressed from top to bottom, from the youngest student to the graduating senior of their abilities. And these are the students of tomorrow, so I appreciate your time, thank you.
I just want to add that, first, I apologize for being late. This is why I wanted to get here to see this, I didn't want to miss any of it. I did look at this a couple days ago on the portal here, and I just want to mention that, you know, I looked at it, I'm looking at the graphs, the pictures, looking at the green and the red, and as good as I thought we were, we can always do better, but what struck me is the young lady who just gave me numbers. I'm looking at 19, 20, 21% disagree or strongly disagree. When you put it in as 1,000 people, I mean, that strikes and that's really had an impact on me. So I thank you for doing that, because when you start looking at a lot of graphs, and I've looked at tons over the years, you just throw the numbers around in your head and you're always looking for, okay, where are we trending? But that's a lot of students and this is what it's all about. So thank you for that and thank you for the comments and suggestions about what you think we should be doing to address some of these issues.
Add on that, do you guys ask for suggestions or comments from the students during this, or is it just a numerical scale?
At the end of the survey, there is a box that says, "Any comments or any additional information you want to include in your survey entry." So we do look at those as well. We compiled a packet, I believe, last year. I'm not sure if we did it this year, I don't think we did, but last year, we compiled a packet of all the entries in that box and we reviewed those.
Imagine you probably get some good data out of that.
Yes.
So you don't do them after every question or after every... Alright, so just a suggestion, you might be able to get, or data mine some better suggestions from students if you put comments at the end of each section. Going through those questions, comments are going to be fresh in their head rather than waiting to the end of the survey. It's a long survey, it's great information, but just if we're looking to get some suggestions like you guys had...
Well, I think another thing with that is that we've looked at that before, but the problem is, is it's time-consuming. So we also have to look at the timing of it. We don't want it to be too long because then the student becomes disengaged. So I think that's an important point to look at and we appreciate that. But we try to look at it as the most convenient way that we can get the best data from all the students.
They skipped the question. That was the first we heard that some questions were skipped.
Right. And one thing that Giorgio mentioned in the beginning of the presentation is, at every single school, we have suggestion boxes, sorry. And so we advertise it in posters on the morning announcements, basically saying, "Students, if you want us to bring this to the superintendent, write it down." So we've had so many suggestions about bathrooms, about some, just some issues that we're having in the school. So I think that's our best way to know exactly what's happening, because if it's on a student's mind, they're like, "Oh, I can just put it in the box," you know? Like he said, it is kind of time-consuming, but I think that is one of the best ways that we have personal engagement with the other students is those suggestions.
I just got a couple things, probably answer the one. Where do you guys come up with your ideas for the questions? Where do you get them all? I mean, it looks like you had a lot of them. And two, this kind of puts you on the spot a little bit. Is there a question that you thought as maybe as a administrative department that should have been asked that didn't get asked to the students? If you weren't part of this, what question would you like to see?
So to answer your first question, the group works very diligently in creating general ideas that we want to have included in the survey, and then we work together to put that idea into words. And truthfully, we become very picky with our word choice. And we've definitely looked at questions from previous years, tweaked them, maybe deleted some of them from the survey, and added new ones. So each year, we're updating the questions, trying to make it as specific as possible in which data we want to collect and review.
To answer your second question, simply no. So if we want to ask something, we do. I don't think there's any safety, I think risk-taking needs to happen. If we want to find something out, we're going to find it out. The best way is to ask these students, so we don't really like to hold back. I think those are when you're going to get the questions answered and you're going to find out what you really want to know.
So moving on to comments from the audience, we have none this evening. So we'll move on to the Board of Education Committee reports.
Well, I have a report. So as I'm resuming my role as Chair of the Policy Committee, Connie and I worked together to set up the schedule for our policy meetings for the coming school year. We will be meeting once a month, so there's 10 meetings, and the first meeting is Monday, September 16.
Bob, anything legislative?
Legislative will probably start...
Legislative will probably start the beginning of October and two or three of those students are on the committee. And I'm looking forward to working with them. So we'll start up in October and Connie and I will work together.
Anyone else on committees? Bob, your OCMBOSI's board report.
Thank you again, board, for letting me offer this once a month. Connie sent you a report that I do every month, but I'll give you highlights. We are looking for, as I said last month, a district superintendent for OCMBOSI's applications. If you saw it in the paper and it's been sent throughout New York State. We met with Dr. Brian Hartwell, who's the district superintendent, Keoga Anadaga, who will be doing the search for us. It closes on September thirteenth and we just set up a meeting for mid-September to start looking at applications. We're moving forward with the purchase of Crown Road facility. And I want to thank again Don Keegan and Dan Bowles for attending the meeting. And the majority of the superintendents are gung-ho on us bringing in a referendum. The referendum will be set up probably at BOSI's and all twenty-three component districts' registered voters will be allowed to vote. So more information on that. In my report, we are hiring a lot of new administrators, just like Mr. Bowles is doing in North Syracuse. And congratulations to our vice president here, Mike Marizio, who is now the new director of technology at OCMBOSI's. Congratulations, Michael. I would like to set up, and Mary and I used to talk about this, but now that I'm on the OCMBOSI's board, sometime in October, a visit for Board of Education members. I know many of you work, but if we set it up ahead of time, it would be nice for some of us, JD has done this in the past, to visit our facilities, to really see where our CNS Junior High and some of the other students go. And we would serve you lunch at, the students would serve you lunch at BOSI's. So I'll be working with Connie on that to set up a date sometime in October. You might, I know Mary and you and I have talked about this, visiting our facilities and seeing really what happens. I also want to thank, the last part, I want to thank the people at CNS High School and also I talked to the administrator at Roxborough Road Middle School. Thank you for welcoming BOSI's summer school into your building. We got a successful report the other night at our board meeting of all the help that the administration gave at those schools. And maybe Dan, you can let them know that BOSI's was very excited about them helping us out there. And that's the end of my report. Anybody have questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Dan?
Thank you. Bob, to answer your question, I did get a report from BOSI's and I did talk to administrators, in particular of the high school, which for the first time in three years, picked up basically Beeville and North Syracuse again. And we've been trading off and on and they were very pleased with the accommodations and the staff. I'd like to thank you, Mr. Crabtree, for sending me a message or getting a message to me this weekend. As you know, that there were some storms that came through and we did have some damage to things on property at Allen Road in particular. There was some limbs down by the junior high, but we got on this Monday morning, probably trees sixty to seventy feet in length and good size that it came down from residence property onto the property of Allen Road. But it looked like there was a wind shear, micro whatever came through, but it was pretty strong. So we got on it right away and no damage to the building at all. I would like to say that I met with Paul Farfalia and Mr. Krilla and we were talking about some things and we were wondering about the possibility of the concept of a retreat so that we can work on just how we work together from our end administratively, the board and the union. And we wanted to at least put that out here right now, not for a vote, but again, the concept so that we can work and just make sure that we're on the same page as we're moving the district forward. Would like to say that I visited the marching band Thursday at Band Camp. And I found out that they're out there from twelve in the afternoon till nine at night for a two-week stretch. It is impressive. I went there at four forty in particular and I got there, they have an hour break for dinner. And the kids were in small groups and really bonding, so they weren't active at that time. So I went home, came back and they were all on the field. To the total, there's about a hundred and sixty students in Band Camp. I guess word got out that I was there and Mrs. Siemens came over and she ended up taking me up in the booth. And we went up and they put on a show for me before the next storm came. And I was extremely impressed and the amount of time and dedication. If you think from twelve to nine for that time, it's more than your football team, your basketball teams and all the others. So I was impressed and we have kids as young as seventh grade there. So I just wanted to say I commend Mrs. Siemens and all the students. And I will be trying to get around to more opportunities to see our students perform. The last thing that I have is some of the other activities have started today. Mike Lucia had boys volleyball starting first thing in the morning. I guess football was starting later, so I'm trying to make my rounds different times just to spread the wealth. And I have been getting schedules for other activities throughout the district. So we'll try to make sure myself and other administrators are present.
Moving back to the Board of Education, does anyone have any comments, questions?
Well, the young lady mentioned safety and Mary did a really spoke well about it. I'd like to have a presentation down the road. Been gone for a while, what exactly is done for safety in our school? I mean, what's happening in our country is just horrifying and the kids should be feeling safe in school. I know we're doing a great job. I just want to feel comfortable with a presentation on it.
Good to kind of get some before and after photos done of the buildings where we've really enhanced the security. I'll just comment on what Dan said. I know we had visited the idea of a retreat earlier this year and I'm glad that we're revisiting that. I think it's important. And I think we would all agree that it's something that we should... I appreciate, I appreciate the work that we're doing to get this to happen. Anything else? Great, routine action items. I can take A, B, and C as a group if there's no questions. Oh, motion?
Yeah.
Okay, Bob, second. George?
It's different at BOSI's, we know that.
All in favor? That's unanimous. Moving on to discussion action. I can do A, B, C, D, and E as a group. Jason, would you or Dan just go over the reasoning behind the changes in staffing?
Do a rundown by letter. Letter A, years ago, there was a civil service title change requirement. So every time we have a retirement and the type is too elementary, we have to transition that to the updated title of school secretary once. So that's just a standard process to comply with civil service. Letter B, those are some adjustments that are being, actually, B and C are adjustments being made, combination due to student enrollment and also to make the middle school schedule work as we try to share staff between the middle schools and the secondary schools. It's just really too hard to, back at budget time, to really account for how the final schedules and what the final student totals will be at each level. So that's just a minor adjustment to allow for that. And letter D is to accommodate an additional bus run for special needs students. That's a special needs bus driver and attendant to go to BOSI's. And then letter E is IEP-driven, we have a new student enrollment that requires a one-to-one.
Okay, any questions? Do I have a motion to take those as a group? Erin and Mary, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Okay, letter F, the resolution to establish the tax rate. This is coming off of our vote this year, yes? So it's going to be a roll call. Do I have a motion? Paul, Erin? Connie? Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I wanted some discussion. I apologized before, because I know Paul does it right after the motion, right? I'd like Donna to explain a little bit. I'm still a little confused in that when we've had votes before, the school district does a wonderful job. We vote on a budget which was a hundred and sixty-six point seven million dollars. And usually the taxes come in very reasonable or lower. And that happened in Cicero and it happened Salina. I'm very disappointed in what I see for Clay and I'd like it explained a little bit to us.
Well, as you know, when we do our budget, we're working off of the prior year's assessed property values because the assessments aren't done yet. So the only difference is that when we calculate the final rates, we calculate, we distribute the levy that the community approved over the final assessments. And as Bob mentioned, we had, we have a long history of where the actual tax rate comes in lower than the projected tax rate. And that's usually due to the fact that the assessed values increase. We've got a lot of development here in our school district, so there's more properties coming on the tax rolls. Assessments are updated, the towns of Cicero and Salina are full value assessments. So to be specific, our district tax assessments, there was a hundred and forty-five million dollars more value in the final assessments from the ones we used in the prior, from the prior year. So Cicero and Salina, both in their cases, the tax levy went down. We had originally quoted a, bear with me one second as I bring this up. We originally quoted twenty-four dollars and forty-six cents for Cicero and Salina. It came in at twenty-three dollars and sixty cents, so it's about point eight-five percent reduction in the rate. And on, but the town of Clay, their equalization rate went from over four, four point two, down to four percent. And so again, we don't do the assessments and we're not involved in the equalization process. But the concept is that the towns do the assessments and the state has this Board of Equalization rates. And they go in and they basically evaluate, how are the towns doing? How close are the assessments to fair value? So they, because the town of Clay doesn't do fair value assessments, their equalization rate is what last year was four point two percent. And I'm not saying this as critically, but what the assessor, the assessment equalization board is basically saying is that they're way off of a hundred percent, they're not close. Well, they're even further away this year and so they lowered that equalization rate to four. So although people in Clay will pay a higher rate than we estimated, their properties will be valued at a lower rate than they should be. I mean, that's kind of what the equalization board is saying. Overall, that's kind of the bottom line, is that, is that, once again, Cicero and Salina are a little less than we expected and Clay's a little more than we expected.
Thank you for explaining that.
Why do they do it that way?
I don't know, well, can I just make one more comment? So a house that's assessed for four thousand dollars in the town of Clay has a full value of a hundred thousand dollars. It's kind of an odd, an odd situation and that's why their number is so much higher. They pay five ninety, five hundred and ninety dollars and fourteen cents per thousand dollars of assessed value, whereas in the town of Cicero, it's twenty-three dollars and sixty cents, so...
Do they think there's an advantage to doing it that way?
Believe it or not, I think about half the state, half the towns in New York State are full value and the other half are these other methodologies. I don't know, I don't know the answer to that. Again, the school district does not do either the equalization rates or the assessments. We just use those to distribute the taxes and calculate the tax bills.
Any other questions? Bob for asking that. Bill and I? Aye.
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 Next, we have the authorization of warrants. Again, to do with the assessment rolls and district taxes. Do I have any questions on that before? Okay, motion? George and Erin, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Tax collection and deposit agreement. Here again, just working off of this year's receiver of taxes in Clay, Cicero and Salina. Any questions? Do I have a motion? Mary? Mark, all those in favor? Unanimous. Next, we have the redesigned seeker for Carl W. Silley Bear Road Elementary School for our re-renovation plan. Any questions on this? This is just a standard question item. Do I have a motion? George? Erin, all those in favor? Do we need an executive session before we take personnel A, B, or C? Do I have a motion to accept A, B, and C as submitted? Mark, Matt, all those in favor? That's unanimous. And I'd just like to point out that Ashley Carducci, our new associate principal for Rox Middle, is here tonight, so welcome. We hope you enjoy it here. Again, welcome. Next, I will make a motion for executive, to move into executive session for the purpose of receiving an update on one legal item relative to potential litigation, to receive an update on negotiations with the teacher, bus engineer, and food service bargaining units, and to review the employment record of seven individuals with no action to follow. Do I have a second? Mary, all those in favor? That's unanimous and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.